Good evening.
Greetings.
Good evening, Richard.
Hello, JJ. Good evening. And hello, Karen Anne.
Hello.
JJ, remind me later to ask you something about this publication authorization.
Okay, it was the pretty standard one.
It's actually just the fact that it refers to permission to do certain things from the executive director. And I don't know that they've had one of those for quite some time.
Necessary, I can call them tomorrow.
Oh, Carrie, how you doing? How are things in California?
You're muted.
I'm well. Thanks for asking. How have you been?
I'm super, Carrie. I'm good. Looking forward to seeing all of y'all again.
Again, good evening, all.
Karen Anne, I have already notified Angela of this. I may not be sitting here for the entire meeting. I will try to be listening in case I'm needed. But I may not be able to actually sit here for the entire meeting, but I'll be available if you need me.
And as you know, a good deal. Well, I don't want to hex us. The last portion will be an executive session.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
I made you co-host, Madam Chair, with the caution that I gave over in in private message.
You got it. I think we're going to admit Mr. Martin Cowan and Mr. Wayne Harlow.
I don't know about him. He might be one of those people I told you about.
Saboteur.
Yeah, that's tragic.
I heard he's trying to dissolve the Colorado Party, you know?
We only hurt the ones we love. Are always hurt. I don't know.
Okay, I'm gonna start noting.
I'll let you manage the waiting room. Oh, goodness.
Angela, I'm of the belief that my discussion in this meeting that I'm bringing forward will need to be an executive session as it's dealing directly with the content of a contract that we have with an outside entity.
That's a very good point. I, I think that will be a good motion to make.
I'm just glad that we're finally getting to have the conversation.
Yeah. I'm low-energy Jeb tonight.
Will clap. You won't have to ask, yeah.
Thank you. Please clap.
I've been doing yard work for two days.
Right. I've been doing yard work, but my yard is small, so that's not why I'm low-energy. Tiny little yard. Still thinking about paving it over and putting out some trash. Homeless people.
I'm more impressed that you have a yard at all in Austin.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm in a suburb. I've, I, I, I've been force-fed the suburb Kool-Aid. It's like that meme. It's the milk.
Riverside when I lived down there.
Yeah.
Are you near Michael Malice?
Um, I'm not, not near Michael Malice. That's all I'll say.
He's her neighbor.
It's pretty cool how many cool people live pretty close by. Including including our lovely executive director, Lady Houston, but she is not going to be on the call this evening because I think she might be traveling.
Hey, Houston in Austin. That's funny.
Right?
Austin's gonna be fun. I've been looking forward to it since 2020.
It's gonna be a lot of fun. There's a lot of cool stuff to do down here.
I've been casually peeking at restaurants and stuff to try.
Yep. Yep. Um, hmm. Restaurants are hit and miss. I've had some good recommendations, though.
Sweet.
Yeah. I'm spoiled coming from one of the food capitals. I feel like anybody from New York and LA, we're very high standards. Nashville probably has high standards, too. That's gonna be my guess.
Agreed.
Yep, especially with like barbecue and meat, meat items.
Do you like Bloody Marys? Well, not right now.
I don't drink alcohol, but I drink, I mean, I would drink vegetable juice.
Um, there's a, there's a bar called Casino El Camina, um, that's on Sixth Street in Austin. Food Network named it the top Bloody Mary either in America or Texas.
Interesting.
I can't remember because their burger was also ranked.
Okay, well, that would be a good place to visit.
Yeah, they, the burger has pork belly on it. It's, it's a gigantic burger for like 10 bucks.
Interesting. Okay.
Sounds like I will be asleep.
All right, so we got only 29 people on this call. We should have put up some more controversial agenda items and we would have tons of people. I'm so sorry, everyone. This is not going to be a wild, crazy, crazy meeting. Let's do a little informal count of how many members we've got.
Um, I have, um, bolded, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 primaries. Um, so we more than have quorum and then we have several that would sit in that are alternates. Kathy Yena Scavage would sit in for Mr. Duque. Connor Nopamusino would sit in for Mr. Nana.
All right, let's start texting everyone. On up their phones.
I, I didn't count myself. We have 11.
11.
Idiot.
Uh, Brian Elliott. Here we go. The man, the myth, the legend, the king.
Tyler Hobbs, uh, should be joining us soon.
We are all Tyler Hobbs.
Poor, poor Tyler Hobbs.
I don't want to hear that fucking name right now.
I think that's totally fine. I bet he doesn't want to hear his own name since he got.
He got screwed royally.
Screwed way, way worse than we did.
He's been stolen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel, I mean, he's selling like a weird product, but I still feel bad for him.
His, hi- his followers have been scammed like the worst. That is not, not been pretty for, for that poor guy. He who must not be named.
I mean, to be fair, to many people, we're selling a weird product, too.
Yes, um, and we, and we door knock. Wow, we are, we are those people. Okay, so we've got 12 people here.
You made it sound like the Jehovah's Witness.
I sure did. I don't believe Dustin Nana is going to be able to join. Um, I know that Steve Benner, you're gonna have to drop off soon. Let's see. Kathy, do you know if Miguel is gonna join?
I do not. I just messaged him.
Okay, here's Mr. Joseph Eklund. Fantastic. Joseph, we're delighted to see you. See, now we're up to 13.
And I have Connor sitting in then for Mr. Nana.
Yeah, are we missing any other at-large members?
No, but for region, we're, we don't have anyone from region eight. Oh, here he is, Patrick Ford. Okay, so we do now. So all the regions are represented either by a regional or an alternate.
Okay, great.
Mark and Kathy as in for Mr. Duque. Oh, I'm not sharing my screen, so no wonder. I'm saying all this thinking like you're following along and I'm not sharing my screen. Okay, hold on one sec.
All right.
And I'm gonna get the YouTube video started now.
Thank you very much.
Is my screen showing up?
It is.
Okay. Because Zoom freaks out the minute I hit share screen.
Is this thing on? Yes, it is. Testing, testing. One, two, three.
Do live on YouTube. It'll take a second. What? Got over. Okay. This user, okay, so I, I know we were doing a security update, but my login isn't allowing me, hold on, I got another login. The login I typically use isn't allowing me to livestream because it's locked down, which, good. So I'm using a different one. I normally use a login with less permissions, but here you go. Okay, it should be saying on the screen it's streaming now.
It sure does. Hello, internet. Okay, so we've got our agenda up. Almost.
I'm sorry?
Um, agenda, yeah. Okay, so let's go ahead and, uh, let's get started. I'm gonna call us to order at 8:07 PM Eastern Time. Um, Madam Secretary, if you don't mind, could you please do a roll call whenever you're ready?
Um, certainly, I have it informally done, but we're gonna do it formally now. The chair is here, Mr. Smith. Okay, let me just mark him. Um, Mr. Hagopian?
Here.
I am here, Mr. Blankenship.
I'm here.
Mr. Bowen?
Here.
One second, I'm just hitting up and admit to a couple people. Okay, um, Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Nikala?
Here.
Mr. Ruffo?
Present.
Mr. Banner?
Present.
And I don't believe Mr. Duque is here. Has that changed? Mr. Eklund?
I am here.
Ms. Ayler?
I am here.
Mr. Ford?
I'm here.
Ms. Gabbert?
Here.
And I don't believe Mr. Nana is here. Mr. Watkins?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Cowan?
Martin Cowan is here.
Mr. Dasing?
Here.
Oh, look, I, I hit red too soon. Um, Mr. Hall? Okay, Mr. Hall is absent. Whoops, wrong color. One second. Orange. Mr. Nopamusino?
Present.
Mr. Pankey?
Here.
Mr. Chunyevich? Hey, I don't see him. Ms. Yena Scavage?
Here.
All right, Madam Chair, absent is Vice Chair Smith, Region One Representative, Mr. Duque, so Ms. Yena Scavage will be sitting in for him. Region Three Representative, Mr. Nana. So Mr. Nopamusino will be sitting in for him, and we also have our Parliamentarian, Richard Brown.
Great, thank you very much. So I believe the next item on our agenda is public comment. Okay, so here's how we're gonna do this. Go down there to the bottom of your screen. See where it says reactions? Need you all to raise your hands. Click reaction and raise hand. And then I can see who all wants to give public comment. And the way that I'm gonna do it, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just reminding everyone, I put it on the screen, but please state your state, because I don't always know what state everyone is from. Thank you.
It's a very good reminder. The way we're gonna do it is I'm gonna give non-LNC, non-LNC members are going first, and then LNC members will come around and get you, so I'm not forgetting you. I'm just gonna give everybody else first crack at it. So we're gonna go for two minutes. Please take your cell phone, time yourself if you have a lot to say so that you're not going over, because I hate cutting you off. But we do need to be timely and respectful of everyone else. Okay, Mr. Jonathan Jacobs, go right ahead.
Uh, Madam Chairman, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to speak to something that I believe Mr. Nikala is bringing up a- at this meeting. Um, generally in support, um, as I'm sure some of you know, I have ended up doing a lot of state organizations over the past several months. Uh, perhaps too many state organizations over the last several months, but I would like to make just some observations. Uh, first of all, that, um, I could, I would not recommend any kind of a cookie cutter bylaw from the national. However, it may be a good idea to do some sort of a sample or model bylaw that, um, states could copy and could modify. It would certainly not be any kind of a mandated one. Um, and on two points for affiliates, uh, that I would note, um, that I've seen in dealing with them, that there would be two very key points. Uh, one of them is that there be some method for uh, members to call general meetings, conventions, something like that. And that also that they look at disciplinary action and especially methods for appeals of disciplinary action from any kind of officers or boards. I will yield back the balance of my time.
Thank you very much. Let's move now to Mr. Pietro Garaci. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. Just gonna make a quick comment on a few items here. Uh, what the LP Virginia did was dumb, and hopefully they can get another affiliate going there soon. Uh, with New Mexico, I knew they'd try to do a new affiliate, but then you have competing affiliates, which could lead to a protracted legal battle, which would not be optimal. Uh, New York, uh, our court case didn't work, uh, despite the funding from the LNC Executive Committee, uh, the court case didn't go through, or it didn't work. And therefore, if we don't get 150,000 write-in votes for Larry Sharp, uh, it's gonna be very impossible to get a presidential candidate on the ballot. New York, if I don't master the legislature of resources. Uh, Youth Caucus, uh, where we're getting the Youth Caucus, we have new chair, Teddy Gurkin, uh, California. So I put some links in the chat. You can join our Discord. And if you feel like you want to donate, please donate. And finally, our County New York Libertarian Party is having its county convention this Saturday, October 8th. A better place to farm grow in Central Valley. So if you want to come on by, we break, have free food, you can join in person or on Zoom. You have an eager meeting time. Come onto our convention.
All right, well, thank you very much, Pietro. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Richard Brown, and then we're gonna go to LNC members.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I just wanted to say I concur with the comments that, that JJ, uh, just made a few moments ago. I, I agree that, that the affiliates need the freedom to, to draft their own bylaws, but I do think that a, a, a guide or a template or a checklist from National could be very helpful to the affiliates in, in coming up with a good set of bylaws. And I also agree that it is probably a good idea for the affiliates to touch on uh, removal from office and, and appeals, that sort of thing. I, I basically concur with all of his, his comments, and we've discussed some of those things previously.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Up next, we have Pat Ford.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to take public comment for a moment or so, just to remind people that the relief efforts in Florida are in fact ongoing. There is a pinned post to the LP Facebook page. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Nikala for his efforts in Florida and particularly Mr. John Thompson in Florida, who has worked tirelessly, uh, this first shot as we're doing at National Relief Efforts. And of course, Mr. James Toller, who's the Vice Chair of the Libertarian Party of Kentucky. It's still very simple. Go online to the particular Walmart, choose that location, order something if you can. We understand there's a minimum service charge. We understand that they, asking you to set appointments, just pick out any time. We've been in constant contact with that particular Walmart. There is a Cash App, and we understand that some people would like a Venmo. We're, we're, we're going to be doing a post-mortem later on this week to, to go over some of the practices. Part of the challenge is that none of this, these donations hit the books of any Libertarian Party, and because of some of the election laws, as you can imagine. But this is gonna be ongoing all week. Uh, we may shift later in the week to ask people to segue from, uh, food products to perhaps products that can be used in reconstruction, gloves, some basic tools, in addition to food products. But just watch the LP Facebook page. A big thanks to Connor over at Social Media and the other folks, but Connor has just been all over this. It's been a great team effort. We're gonna learn a lot from this. This isn't a process that's gonna go away. We're continuing, gonna, going to continue to engage and ask the party members, to whatever degree possible, to engage in acts of private charity so that we can, in effect, replace the state. So thanks for all the donated. E- e- even a little bit will go a long way. So we just ask people to do what they can and participate in this and, and future efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ford. Up next, we have Mr. Nikala and then, uh, Ms. Harlow, unless you want to go last.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna quickly harp on what, what, uh, Pat Ford just mentioned is that, you know, here in Florida, now I was just talking, I'm actually on a separate call also on this call, just finishing up with my team in Florida, seeing how everybody's doing and what we can do to help. Um, you know, as Floridians, we're used to hurricanes coming through the state. Um, however, this particular hurricane was specifically catastrophic and rocked the Fort Myers and Tampa Bay areas pretty heavily, quite frankly, impacted most of the state in some way or another. Uh, there's quite a bit of damage. I know folks have lost their homes, their, their businesses, and there, there has been a loss of, uh, life in the area, at least 72 confirmed dead. Um, so this is something that's gonna take decades to recover from. And as libertarians, we are not waiting for government permission or uh, waiting on the government to come in and start cleaning things up. We are getting people into disaster areas, um, in order to, uh, start helping people locally, uh, uh, and, and, and hand out, you know, everything from, from fresh clothes to tarps to, uh, you know, feminine products to baby diapers to all kinds of things people need after disaster. So, uh, anybody here is interested in, in helping us, uh, in supporting those efforts. You can donate. I put the Cash App in the chat. It's EKY Flood Help on Cash App. Um, we're working with the good folks up in Kentucky and Pat and the folks Support Committee National to coordinate the efforts. You can also email love@lpf.org. Uh, John Thompson is our Emergency Coordinator for the state and, uh, working on getting trucks, uh, at Walmart filled up. We have already empowered at least full supplies and more to come. And we're sending them running to the disaster areas. Um, I know DeSantis said, you know, don't help anybody. Don't, don't go out there. Don't give anything away, just send cash, but we're gonna ignore that and do what libertarians do best, and, um, we're gonna do, uh, we believe in voluntary action, and we fully anticipate on, uh, helping those folks in the area. And include libertarians and, and folks out there that just need our help. So anything you guys could do to help anybody listening, uh, feel free to donate a couple bucks and, uh, it'll go directly to a good cause. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nikala. Uh, we have Ms. Harlow and then Andrew Watkins.
Uh, I'd like Andrew to go first, please.
You got it.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Uh, I just wanted to give a, just a quick little update about Virginia. Um, the members have put together a petition and it, that should, a petition for a, uh, general convention, and that should be going, it should be, uh, starting to circulate early this week. Um, they're just waiting on a couple of, uh, questions to be answered. I've been in contact with, uh, the Treasurer, Dan John, as well as a couple of other members. Uh, so it's, it's looking like a tentative, um, December 3rd convention. That's likely when it's going to be, but you never know.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Watkins. Up next, we have Mr. Elliott.
Hi, just a quick question as far as the Walmart. Uh, what would the greatest needs be for the folks who are down there? I'm thinking diapers and baby formula might be the best things to buy from Walmart, but I'm asking personal guidance on what to buy.
Um, can we do it in the chat so that we don't go back and forth in public comment?
Sure, if somebody could post something, that's great.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have, uh, Pat Ford and Stephen Nikala. Okay, and then, um, we have, um, Ms. Harlow?
Okay, um, yes, first, uh, to Pietro Garaci, if you could update LPEDIA for the news on the Youth Caucus, I would really appreciate it. Um, just to supplement what Mr. Watkins says, because there seems to be some confusion. Um, there isn't going to be a new Virginia affiliate. There, we haven't lost our Virginia affiliate. The Virginia affiliate that has existed since the 1970s is the same affiliate that's there. They need to have a special convention to take care of some business that was left in disarray. But we're not reconstituting, re-affiliating anything like that. Um, lastly, just ask the LNC, as I usually do, to welcome Chase Crum, who's here, who's my unofficial, um, secretary that I've been training, and if he's able to make it to Austin, um, just like the LNC to consider that, um, I guess I'm putting you on notice, and I'm probably gonna make a motion to have him sit in a little bit for me, so he gets some real-life trial by fire, um, and potentially in some future electronic meetings. So in case I can never be at something, we have somebody who's trained. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, that concludes public comment. If there's a desire for it at the end, we may do a much shorter one-minute public comment at the very end of the meeting. Okay, so let's jump into our first noticed item, and that is Policy Manual Committee Proposed Amendments. There are two motions as noticed, and those were placed on the agenda by our lovely secretary, Ms. Karen Anne Harlow.
And, um, also, Mr. Elliott and Ms. Yena Scavage may want to speak to them, because this comes out of actually the Chair's Advisory Committee on the Policy Manual. Um, I'm going to make the first motion to see if there's a second, and then I'll speak to it. It is to amend through deletion and minor additions on pages. The minor additions are on pages 24 and 70. The section's indicated by the markup copy of the policy manual, which was previously sent to the LNC entitled PM Motion Number One.
Okay. It cuts, oh, there it is, motion number one, if you hover your cursor over it, then it actually says motion one, and then below it, on the one note, it says motion two. Okay, so we have the red markup here, and then underneath.
Yeah, and there's explanation I can give if there's a second to the motion. So I came out of committee, actually, it probably doesn't need a second, but there's one.
Well, okay, there we go, it's it's got a second, so it's, we've covered all of our bases, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Um, so let me just ask, so that you can speak to it in detail, um, can you tell us the the major changes that are gonna happen in this motion?
Sure, and I'll also yield to um, Mr. Elliott and Ms. Yena Scavitch as well, um, these are areas of not to be insulting to anyone who had a hand in putting these in the policy manual in the past, because I always had a hand in putting some of these in the policy manual in the past. It's 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 areas of bloat that are in the policy manual, the policy manual, a lot of people have a lot of confusion, it's intended to be amended frequently. It's to suit the needs of the current LNC, but what happens is there's some controversy on every LNC, because we're libertarians. And we put a policy manual provision in place to deal with it, and then it never goes away. So our policy manual honestly is haunted by the ghosts of controversies past, like that large section on LP News. This is before my time, but just by reading it, you can tell at one time there was some kind of hot dispute on the LNC about what should be in LP News. So they put it in the policy manual, we haven't argued about the content about LP News since I've been on the LNC in twenty sixteen, so it's it's something that doesn't need to be in there right now, it it's handled between the Chair um, and and staff. So the first um, policy manual motion one is to get rid of of what we considered things that just didn't need to be in there, or didn't follow our current practice, may have been a past practice of the LNC, but is not a current practice. And I entertain any questions and so on.
It's like this, Ms., looks like Ms. Yena Scavitch also had something to add.
Yes, I'll just add that this, the revisions to the policy manual is is a work in progress, it's going to take many stages. This is just the first stage where we went through and looked at um, parts of the policy manual that we felt that could be removed, and you will see the second motion. Um, it it and and the 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 policies that we proposed to remove are separated into two motions here. The, after this stage, we will go on to look at the remaining language. There is uh, to possibly revise, restructure, there is some additional policies we may add and have you know, for the LNC's consideration, so this is just the first step of our revision process.
Okay, questions? Anybody have any questions, if not, I want to just turn it back over to Ms. Harlos if she wants to speak.
Yeah, there's something I neglected to add, I'm glad Ms. Yena Scavitch reminded me, I'm just an FYI, these combined two motions, if they both are passed in there entirely, we'll cut our policy manual by twenty pages, it's so big right now that nobody knows it. Like, I'm the person who reads these things for daily devotionals, and I don't even know it all. And the reason why we did these two motions right up front before getting into it even more granularly, is we wanted to make it a smaller document for us to even go through and deal with. Our next stage that we will have for the November meeting is eliminating redundancies, because there's a lot of redundancies. But this right off the bat will take the policy manual from eighty pages to sixty pages, which is much more manageable.
That sounds great. Okay, any further discussion or questions about this motion? Going once, going twice? Okay, Ms. Harlos, would you be more comfortable with a roll call vote, or the, okay, let's do it then.
Okay, one second, I have it already set up, Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Ms. Yena Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Eklund? Did we lose Mr. Eklund? I'll come back.
Yeah, let's come back.
Ms. Eiler?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
I will vote yes, Mr. Napamucino?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffo?
Yes.
I don't believe Mr. Smith has come, Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Madam Chair, why did not that add up, I'm gonna, I destroyed my formulas, I'll count them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, did Mr. Eklund?
He's on, he's on. I see his name there.
Mr. Eklund? Okay, well, it right now it's fourteen um, zero zero, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, the motion passes.
I know why it didn't add up, I'm a dummy, okay, I was supposed to put yeses rather than nesses, but anyway, we got it.
Yeah, you're fine, you're fine, okay, let's go on to the next noticed motion. Which is also a policy manual amendment, so it's right below it, policy manual amendments dash motion two, you click that in the one note. Um, Ms. Harlos, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would like to actually turn it over to Ms. Yena Scavitch for this, since she's on the EPCC, and this impacts the EPCC, I think she's better qualified to speak to this than I am.
Sounds good.
So, we have uh, our uh, policy manual, and there is also an employee manual. And the employee manual obviously governs um, the the employees of the LP. However, some policies that relate to this, to the staff have made their way into the policy manual. So the committee has decided to remove all of those and place them um, where they, where they should, where they belong, which is in the um, employee manual. Now, the employee manual needs to be updated, that is on our plate on the EPCC, we will be working with the um, with Laney, Ms. Houston, to revise that. Um, I believe that has been um, the the last time it was revised in was twenty eighteen. Um, so these policies for now will just go wholesale into the employee manual, uh, however, they may be revised as we get into that process.
All right, there we go. Um, any questions about this section?
Yeah, I do have a question, so, Ms. Yena Scavitch, is this more or less just a shifting of the actual content, it doesn't really alter it in a significant way?
Correct, there's no, there is no change in the content, it is just the location of the content. The long, the the content may be changed later as part of a separate process. Um, but we want, uh, the the vision of the policy manual revision committee is to, you know, remove everything that relates to staff, but except where it involves directly the LNC, and so all of these policies are just staff policies.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other, oh, Ms. Harlos, would you like to speak?
Yes, and it this is related and not related a little bit, but just in general, because it's the overall thing about the policy manual committee, um, if any members have suggestions for things that need to be cleaned up, Mr. Mullman um, proposed some very good changes to some very confusing definitions of membership. Um, we welcome them, particularly if there's people here who have been on the LNC in the past and have known things that just didn't work right, the policy manual committee really wants these suggestions from members, other LNC members, past LNC members.
Very well stated, any other questions on this motion? Going once, going twice? Okay, Ms. Harlos, whenever you're ready, let's go to a roll call vote.
Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Ms. Yena Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Eklund?
Yes.
Ms. Eiler?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
I will vote yes, Mr. Napamucino?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffo?
Yes.
As, I know Mr. Smith's uh, uh, said in chat, he was coming, I don't know if he is here.
He's waiting right now to be allowed in, from what he said.
I don't see him in the waiting room.
He's not, um, Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, it is fifteen, zero to zero, and Madam Chair, on the prior ballot, I think Mr. Eklund had problems with his connection, because he came back in, and our standing rules do allow him, if he wishes to register a vote, since he came back within five minutes.
That's fine, I'll allow it, it does not change the the vote count anyway.
Mr. Eklund?
Um, yes, it's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I have that.
All right, great. Okay. Are we on the next agenda item, motion passes?
Yes, the next item was Mr. Nikala's discussion item.
Okay, so, hold on, before we jump into that, let me see, um, okay, so pause real quick, if you're trying to get in, you need to have your name, because there's a couple of people who are trying to get in with, like, profanity or you know, whatever, obviously troll names, I don't know who you are, I need to know who you are. So, take that advice, please, if you can. I'm not trying to be nasty to anyone, but I don't want people with duplicate accounts on, and obviously, we don't want to get Zoom bombed with pornography, profanity, Nazi KKK stuff, this is live streaming to YouTube, and that's just how we gotta deal with things. Okay, so, back to our regularly scheduled agenda items, okay, the the next thing that I have is discussion affiliate bylaws and constitution sophistication. It was noticed by Ms. Nika- Mr. Nikala, before we start on this, I'm gonna tell you guys, this is a Chair's Directive that was issued specifically to the Affiliate Support Committee. I do not want to see people um, working on the same project at the same time, that's not a good way to be productive. And um, I don't want to step on the Affiliate Support Committee's toes, I have full faith and confidence that they're gonna do a good job. So we're gonna go ahead and hear this agenda item, but this should really be directed to the Chair of the Affiliate Support Committee, and it's not something that I feel really comfortable meddling with, but take it away.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, um, well, to to be completely honest, I didn't realize that it was something that the Affiliate Support Committee was already working on. Um, and it's something I can definitely work with, I believe, I believe Pat, Pat, you're Fleet Support Committee Chair, right? Um, so that's something we can, we can talk about offline, um, I actually wasn't aware that of that this is already in the works, so um, Pat, I might have talked to you about this, but um, but just to give my my two-minute elevator speech real quick. Um, you know, obviously, if this is something that you guys are working on, then then certainly we all know that this is something that needs to be addressed. And um, what I'm proposing, and something you guys might already be working on or considering, and maybe I can just add a little bit of spice to the conversation and something to think about, um, is I wanted to go into this, just priming the pump for the idea that we needed to do something at a national level um, to assist affiliates in hardening their bylaws and constitution. And what I'm not suggesting is anything compulsory, what I'm not suggesting is anything that affiliates are forced into, because we're libertarians and we don't do that. Um, but I am suggesting is a a clear need um, for things to be done legally at the affiliate level. And what I mean by that specifically is, you know, all of us have seen the uh, the the past few years, what has happened in states like Delaware and other states where bylaws and uh, and constitutions have been uh, subverted for uh, personal gain by one group or another. And and quite frankly, I don't care who takes an affiliate, um, I don't care what faction it is, I don't care who it is. Uh, as long as it's done legally and it's done properly, and it's done in a way that um, most uh, uh, average people can can look at and say, you know, it was it was done by the books and 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 we can, we can bless it, and not in a roundabout way that uh, that causes uh, drama and unneeded attention, and and one thing I really don't want or to continue to happen is for the LNC to play referee in these matters and and decide who does what and who gets to play with the toy. Um, so, Pat, let's talk at another time, uh, one-on-one, I didn't realize you guys were already working on this. Um, so if there's anything I can do to assist, um, but just just a few things, I know that the uh, the Libertarian Party of Florida, if we take a look at our bylaws and our constitution, is something we take extremely seriously. Um, it's something that has been uh, grown and uh, hardened over the years that I think we're we're very proud of, because you know, we we follow, we take our laws very seriously, we 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 try to handle things with the utmost level of professionalism within the Libertarian Party of Florida. Uh, that's the way we like to do things, and uh, other states uh, need need, if they need the help or the guidance or the support, or at least the uh, the self-awareness to say, hey, we need to take a look at our bylaws and our constitution to make sure that there is no holes, this is a legal document that's supposed to protect us, and it's how the organization uh, grows, and that's something that, you know, perhaps we can have a hand in, but I won't take up any more time, I know I mentioned fifteen minutes for discussion, but since this is something that we're already working on, uh, Pat, let's talk next week.
Ms. Harlos, did you have something you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, and I obviously too will be, Pat, Pat has already spoken with me a little bit on this, but we'll we'll be speaking some more. But there was a lot of concern when this was put on the agenda, um. Want to reassure people that I certainly, and I don't think anyone on this LNC would, but I can't speak for everybody, you know, not um, entertain or s- support any kind of top-down thing, and I know there are some people who think bylaws are just procedure, that they're ideologically neutral, they are not ideological neutral, and I I certainly don't want the LNC salting that soup. But what I do think the Affiliate Support Committee can do is um, have a checklist of things that need to be covered in the bylaws without telling them the way it needs to be covered, like, do you want to have electronic conventions? Without giving an opinion on whether they should or not, because that's an affiliate decision. But a lot of people don't know where they need to be properly covered, but one thing I I do want to impress, and I I've said this with so many affiliates, and I'll say it here. I love volunteers, and I love committees, but there's some things where you do need to have a professional involved, even if it's just in an advisory capacity in your committee. Um, the best people to be on the bylaws committee are not always the one guy who wants to do it, who doesn't know anything about it. You can ruin your affiliate that way, it's better to not have a bylaws committee than have a bylaws committee of people who don't know what they're doing, even if they're the greatest volunteers in the world, we've seen this happen so many times. But you can engage a parliamentarian who will help teach these people, because we do want to raise up future leaders and, you know, teach them on how to do these things, but be very, very cautious in your bylaws changes, people don't know, that's how Oregon started. They did a bylaws change that made it impossible for them ever to have quorum again at a convention. In fact, it happened in mid-convention, where they lost quorum, because bylaws change is going to affect immediately, so it's it's super important that as we become more and more of a professional organization, that we treat our legal documents like professions, you wouldn't have the first volunteer operate on your heart. Sometimes the first volunteer isn't the best one for your bylaws committee, it requires a certain skill set.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos, um, I'm gonna, uh, I don't know, Pat, did you want to say something? Your hand.
No, I'm good for now, we'll uh, we'll all be offline in the next, in the in the coming days.
Okay, great, so um, to be clear to everyone listening who's wondering, or maybe unnecessarily freaking out about national doling out bylaws. Uh, the directive I gave was to put together a guideline of best practices, it's not a template. Um, and it is certainly not cookie cutter bylaws, it is just general guidelines, Pat Ford has been around a long time, I totally trust that he's gonna do a good job on this, and that he's also gonna consult parliamentarians, so on and so forth, so um, Affiliate Support Committee is doing an excellent job, and So on and so forth. So um, Affiliate Support Committee is doing an excellent job and quite honestly, I'm just delighted with everything they're doing. Okay, so let's see here. Next item on the agenda is sorry, I'm flipping back and forth between screens. Uh, discussion, goals, status update. Mr. Smith, were you able to join the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Let me change your name. It looks like somebody. I know what they did and I will fix that.
Yep, thanks.
I know, I know how it happened. I'm not gonna say here because I'm not gonna give people ideas, but this isn't going to happen again. These, there's a certain couple of people playing games and I already have the solution to it and
All right.
and reporting the people to Zoom.
All right, one second. I'm so sorry. We're gonna have to stand at ease because I just had an outlet like explode and I need to change my laptop key. Sorry, two minutes.
Apologies for not letting you in sooner. Um, Mr. Smith, I didn't realize that was actually you and now I figured out what happened.
Did I hear Madam Chair say she had an outlet that exploded?
That's what it sounded like. It, we're gonna blame, what's his name? Tyler Hobbs.
So so not a receptacle, electrical outlet in her new house? But that would refer to something else?
I do not know.
Okay, well, that sounds rather serious.
No, it's fine.
But, okay.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I just heard it pop and it's fine. That's just, you know, that's that's life. Um, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so on to the next agenda item, which was discussion, goals, status update. Okay, so this was noticed by Ms. Harlos. Let's get into our new business items. There we go, adopted goals. Waiting on the OneNote to load.
I put it on there actually for you to give us an update and for us to ask you questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, so let's go through to the end. Let me hit a couple of highlights. I am working with staff on a membership drive for the middle of November because I think that that is going to be important. And that's going to be tied also to fundraising. A lot of this stuff is staff-related. Um, there are gonna be some things that come up on the November budget proposal to get some additional fundraising tools. And some of that is going to be uh related to marketing tools because you need some good marketing tools in order to do fundraising. So that is stuff that um Laney, Gabby and Reed are going to be working on collaboratively to a certain extent. Um, okay, risk mitigation plan. I need to work on that with Mr. Elliott. Strategic partnerships, that's gonna come out of the marketing stuff. We do have affiliate links and I have asked staff to do a hard launch of that since they have been soft launched. So um, Ms. Hus- Ms. Houston is working on that. Grow the party in new demographic directions. Uh, we've been doing a really good job of that with Bitcoin and I am optimistic that we're gonna be identifying other markets as well. Perform market research to identify our target voter base. You're also gonna see this come up at the November budget meeting. Where right now, we're looking for the most affordable way to do market research that's gonna give us actual data. The um, the market research that we get to, by the way, is not gonna be something that that we just sit on like a dragon hoarding its gold. That's gonna be shared with affiliates. I think that's gonna be really, really important for institutional memory and to help everybody do a good job. Create clearer job descriptions. This is something that the EPCC has been working on with the Executive Director. And um, after they create clear job descriptions, then they're gonna update the org chart and map out some workflow processes. I feel really excited about that. They have started to use new um, project management software. So that's really good too. And right now, there's no, there's no giant cost for that. Um, and you'll you'll hear a little bit more about that one at the November budget meeting as well because we would like to make officers and committees. Um, we would like to make that that stuff also accessible to them, especially affiliate support, candidate support and convention committee. I think those guys would probably really appreciate that. It's not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a directive. It's gonna be there for you to use if you'd like to. Implement team building exercises and boardroom training. We're gonna chat about that again in November. Build better affiliate support tools. Affiliate Support Committee is on it. Expand candidate support. Candidate Support Committee is on it. Um, they have they have already put together the um the survey and we've had two other people, two candidates, two additional candidates be vetted for that. Have comms and development department collaborate with social media team on ways they can do outreach while supporting the party's larger strategy and vision. I believe there have been some talks about that. Um, that makes me feel good. Develop a vision statement for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. I would like to have that be an agenda item for our in-person meeting. Um, hit me with as many questions as you want. So who's up first? Um, Mr. Conroney, go right ahead.
I'd just like to give you an update is uh Reed set up that we are having weekly meetings with the the, this is the social media team we're talking about. Uh, we have weekly meetings with the development team uh with Gabrielle, Drew and um others. So we are coordinating efforts to do fundraising. Um, and email and email work and publications to the website are being promoted as well as they are happening. So that that is happening.
Excellent. Um, Ms. Harlos?
I guess, do you know? And I probably should ask you this off-list, but I know members are curious as well. Um, when the executive committee meetings on the budget will be set for?
I'm sorry, the executive committee meetings for the budget?
Yeah, to pr- approve the preliminary budget that then goes to the full LNC in November.
We don't have a date yet. I am waiting to have a chat with Mr. Hagopian and Ms. Houston about that this week. Um, Mr. Hagopian? You said you're available at this point pretty much anytime?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we didn't connect last week because Todd's family was a little bit under the weather and Ms. Houston has been out of town this weekend. So that's why that has not been scheduled yet. So we'll probably schedule that within the next couple of days.
Add one additional question. This was more for the members' benefit. We had um, persons who noted that what was publicly available in the goals document isn't every page and they were wondering why the entire goals document was not publicly available.
Did they want?
Well, there is nine pages and the index indicates pages that aren't included.
Do they want the additional appendix documents?
I don't know.
This, this, there are, there are documents that are redacted that are not publicly available.
Okay, tha- tha- that's all I really, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the the appendix items were all made available at the last in-person meeting. None of those are confidential. It's all, it's a collection of of staff reports and, yeah, LNC reports.
I think it was actual pages that are the non-confidential.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions? A lot of this stuff is gonna happen in November, so I'm sorry, I don't have more for you there, but um, but I'm really, I'm really optimistic about affiliate candidate support and um, oh, we have Mr. Pankey. Yes.
Yes, um, sorry, just as a suggestion so that we can eliminate confusion from members, is it possible to put out the strategy document with um blank pages? Did you say this page is re- uh has been redacted? For executive committee session? That way, everybody knows right on the main document why they're missing things from the index?
Yeah, I really didn't want to do that because it looks so ugly. There, I didn't even I didn't want to go there because it looks suspicious and I actually was trying to not say that out loud, but it is what it is now. Um, okay, any other questions? Okay, if there's no more questions, let's move on to our next agenda item. So here. And that is discussion internal file organization check-in, um, noticed by Ms. Harlos.
Um, yes, I just wanted to make sure while I had everyone's attention and we're all gathered in one place. Um, because for the November meeting, um, I'm going to be asking the LNC members to upload the reports to that upload drive. I sent instructional video. I also, in that video, showed you where you have a, like a personal junk drawer that's on the party drive that you can use for documents that you need. You don't have to use it. You just can use it if you want. Um, and I wanted to make sure no one had any questions. Of course, I'll I'll address the questions offline, but this is just an opportunity to let me know if you have a question. Others probably do. And same thing for the committee chairs. Um, committee folders should no longer reside on the committee chair's personal computer. This is your work product of the committee is property of the party and you need to use a party-owned drive for your committee work. So I also sent to every committee chair an instructional video with a link to your, to the drive for the committee and the committee chair needs to start making use of that. So if there were any committee chairs here as well um, that had any questions. The only exception is things that I cannot see because I do have access to every folder. So if there's something confidential from the officers or from me specifically, that can stay off the drive. Um, me, Angela and the Executive Director can see everything that's on those drives. So if something that we're not supposed to see, which should be rare, um, but I can see an audit committee thing perhaps doesn't get shared with the officers if there's, you know, I I could see that because that's just how that is. But in uh, any other circumstance, yours should be utilizing those those drives. So I'd just like to know if everyone's clear on that and if they have any questions of things that perhaps I didn't address well in the videos.
Any questions for Ms. Harlos? Um, I would echo that this is important for institutional memory. As someone who spent a month digging through LPedia and the website and finding things all over the place and in different formats. Okay, if there's no questions, going once, going twice, we can go on to the next agenda item, which is a discussion LP merchandising agenda is by Mr. Blankenship.
Yes, um, and for this, since it's uh going to be a discussion of a contractual agreement that we currently have and may be renegotiating, uh, I would move that we go into executive session for the purpose of this discussion.
Okay, it's been moved.
I will second that.
Okay, and seconded. Ms. Harlos, your hand is up?
Um, yes, we're already have on the agenda executive session, so I actually would move to postpone this to later in the meeting when we're already going into executive session so that we're not going in and out and in and out. We, we do the the last motion and then it we do the, all the executive session things at one time.
Okay.
Karen, I need to withdraw my motion for that.
Uh, well, it's been seconded, so it belongs to the body. You just need to, you just need to vote for my motion to postpone.
I'll second the postponement.
There we go. Okay, so we've got an amendment. Um, it's been moved and seconded that we postponed the motion to go into executive session to discuss the merchandising contract because it's with a third-party vendor. Um, any discussion on the amendment? Going once, going twice. Any objection? And hearing none, I'm gonna say that the amendment has been adopted. So the amendment is now the main motion. Um, okay, so the main motion is that we postpone this to the end. Um, Ms. Harlos, I'm so sorry, I'm butchering your motion.
I just said until the previously scheduled executive session later in the meeting.
There we go. Um, any further discussion? Any objection? Going once. All right, that motion passes. So we are gonna go and deal with that towards the end of our agenda. Okay, so real quick, the next agenda item is motion to amend twenty twenty-two convention minutes. It's been agendized by Ms. Harlos. So go right ahead and speak to your motion.
Well, I'll make it. I give a explanation on the list, but I'll make it. If there's a second, then I'll speak to it. Um, I would move to instruct the secretary to add the newly disclosed second credentials minority report as an appendix to the twenty twenty-two minutes. So it's an amendment to the already approved convention minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, as I said on the list, I don't really, there's a lot of options of what we can do here. I made the motion just to get discussion started. I don't have a preference. I put some potential substitute motions up in the OneNote, which I have on the screen in case somebody thinks something else should be done. But as we know, at convention, there was a minority report that was declined to be heard by the delegates. I did include it as an appendix to the convention minutes and hindsight, because it was declined to be heard by the delegates. I probably shouldn't have included it as an appendix, but here we are. It's there. We need to be consistent. Now that we've learned there's a second minority report, Ms. Hogarth has conceded this was an error on her part. Um, that she was aware of it, but in the confusion of convention, it just was never presented. But now that I'm aware of it, we need to do something with it and we need to be consistent. We either need to add it as an additional appendix to the convention minutes or remove the first minority report from the convention minutes, which again, as I said, probably shouldn't have been there, but I tend to like to include everything, whether or not the delegates decline to hear it. I I could tell you the most parliamentary correct thing is to remove the first one. To me, the more, more information to party members is to add the second one. If I had a slight preference, it's to add the second one, but I don't really care what the LNC decides. It's up to the LNC. So I've made my motion, but there's some potential substitutes to to instruct me to delete the first one. Um, and a potential footnote. You can see I'm all on the screen, but my slight preference is to just add them as an additional appendix.
Okay, so I don't have a strong opinion about this either way. I'm gonna ask though, if this gets stricken, can it just go on LPedia?
Yes, it will be on LPedia no matter what.
All right, there you go. Okay, so it's been moved. Did anybody have a second? Did anybody want to discuss an amendment?
I have a second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, anything else to add, Ms. Harlos? Okay, oh, Mr. Hagopian, go right ahead.
Sorry, just a quick question. If we um, start adding all um, minority reports, is there any risk that will end up um, being forced to add a ton? I don't know a whole lot about minority reports, like does this open us up for a silly, silly risk down the road?
I know, um, the the way committee reports work, I mean, when you appoint a committee, you are there to hear the report of the committee. A minority report, unless you're standing convention rules otherwise provide, it's not a right. Um, but the minority can certainly distribute it to the convention and apparently this was distributed to some people. It's not some secret that's being made known. Um, to me, it's just a full record of what happened at the convention to include it. Um, but unlike platform and bylaws, which have an automatic right to a minority report, um, credentials doesn't. That's why the convention voted, voted on it. But after the convention, the fact that Ms. Hogarth um inadvertently forgot to include it, it's too late to raise a point of order or anything on that. If that, that ship has sailed, this is just for preservation of the historical record. I like our minutes. I kind of over disclose the minutes, but I am following the tradition of Ms. Masson. I like all the reports to be attached to the minutes. I don't believe in sending people all over. I like all the reports to be attached to the minutes. I don't believe in sending people all over the planet to look for relevant documents. That I would prefer to just have it in there and say, see appendix whatever and give an explanation of it and just leave it be. I prefer over disclosure to under.
Okay, any other questions? Any further discussion? Going once. Go and twice. Go into a roll call vote whenever Ms. Harlow is ready.
One second. Mr. Banner?
Martin Cowan votes yes.
Okay, let me just note that because I didn't realize you were sitting in at this point. Okay, Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Ms. Yenna Scabbage?
Yes.
Mr. Eklund?
Yes.
Ms. Eiler?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott? I'll come back, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
No.
I'm going to abstain on this. Um, Mr. Nepomucino?
I will abstain as well.
Mr. Nikala?
I'll vote I.
Mr. Ruffo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Mr. Watkins?
Abstain.
Mr. Elliott?
Abstain.
Madam Chair, it's eleven, one, four.
Okay, um, I believe the motion passes. I believe this is just a simple majority.
Yes, ma'am.
There we go. All right.
If I just can let the members in the LNC know something, I will this week, again, have the amended minutes then with that appendix, but more importantly, I'll have an amended policy manual out for you guys as soon as possible with those twenty pages gone.
That is lovely. Thank you so much. Um, I can't tell you how freaking excited I am about the policy manual. Things that I never thought I would say in my life. Here we are. Okay, uh, next agenda item is either LP merchandising or a legal update, but it's executive session. Okay, so do we need a motion to get into executive session? It is agendized.
Um, I think it's always good to state the reasons, um, but is there any public comment before we go in?
Oh, yeah, we could do that. So if anybody wants to do public comment, I need you to go down there to the bottom of your screen, hit more reactions, raise your hand. We're just going to do one minute this time around because we did two minutes in the beginning. Give you guys a second or my timer. Okay, um, we do have a handful of people, so let me start at the top. Mr. Jonathan Jacobs, go right ahead.
Uh, Madam Chairman, uh, you can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, it just occurred to me that you are presiding in a room with at least four credentialed parliamentarians sitting in the audience at some point or another. And you're doing a very good job, but it must be incredibly nerve-wracking. So that's all that I wanted to say.
The terror. Thank you so much. Um, okay, let's go next to Mr. Nathan Madden.
Hello, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to apologize for any chaos that may have arisen from my question about the IS committee. Uh, I guess some people took that out of context, so just wanted to apologize and.
No, you're, you're totally fine.
Whenever, whenever it happens, it happens.
And yep, I, I don't want to go back and forth during public comment, but watch the list. Um, thank you so much. Um, up next we have, um, Scotty Bowman. Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, hi. Um, yeah, I just had some questions and I know there was a meeting in between that I missed, but at the September first meeting, there was this discussion of the New Mexico affiliate. I did see a note in the chat from Carrie that there had been a Carrie Anne, that there had been a, um, new affiliate forum. I guess my question is about the ballot access of our presidential candidate up and coming. Does the old affiliate still have ballot access? Well, we have to run a different name with the new affiliate to, you know, if they in all this, I'm just confused by the whole thing. And I don't know if anyone here has any way of clearing up the confusion.
Gotcha. So what I'm going to ask is for people to respond in the chat since during public comment, I'm not supposed to go back and forth. But, uh, it's a totally valid question and you can email us as well. Um, okay, so let's go next to, uh, Pietro Garaci and then I'm going to come back and I'm going to hit all the the reps.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, uh, for your executive session to donate to the Libertarian Youth Caucus. I just put a link in the chat. You can use all your help in our revamp to help reach youth across the country and plug you into positions of leadership and campaigns and overall be the youth arm of the Libertarian Party. So help us reach that goal and please donate. Thank you very much.
All right, and up next we have Mr. Pat Ford.
Hey, did I mention we're doing a fundraiser for Florida? And hurricane, a number of folks reached out to me during this meeting. Some of those will be lost to the ages when we get out of the gym. I'm all over social media. Feel free to call me, email me, suggestions, questions, beefs, arguments. It's all good. Just find a way to give and please, we're going to be doing a, uh, a post-mortem on this late this week, so just reach out. Thank you.
Okay, up next we have Mr. Joseph Eklund.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to pass along a, a note that I received from one of the chairs in my region that, uh, when our very public-facing, uh, snafu with our Twitter account getting hacked, um, they started receiving, uh, questions about that and they didn't know what the deal was. And they were hoping that maybe in the future, something, a lesson we can learn from this could be that when something that is so public-facing, uh, ends up uh, having such a dramatic, uh, event that we can just disseminate especially to our, uh, state leaderships. Um, just send them an email saying, hey, something's happening, we're working on it. You know, something like that. So I figured I'd pass that along and, uh, I'm going to try and take responsibility for that in my region, but I figured I'd share that. Um, so that we can all make sure to disseminate information so that they aren't caught feeling like they are, don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next we have Mr. Rich Bowen.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate, uh, my thanks to this current board uh, for enthusiastically participating in these monthly online meetings. Um, I think they are a big help. Uh, they do keep our quarterly meetings, uh, uh, from, from running over. Um, as some of you know, the prior term, uh, the majority canceled a lot of these meetings at the, to the detriment of getting things done. So, uh, just want to thank everybody for um, participating and, uh, let's keep them up. It does, uh, it really does help move business along. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowen. Couple of final announcements from me. We are going to have another candidate support fundraiser in the middle of October with a live stream. Thank you, Candidate Support Committee for helping us to vet additional, um, candidates. More people can certainly send in requests for fundraising. It's going to, um, it's going to be tight. We're going to raise as much money as we can, but I'm setting a modest goal of like $10,000. So if anybody is looking to get additional funding, just be mindful that the overall goal is 10K and we're going to be splitting that between people. So just keep your expectations reasonable. Um, reach out to the Candidate Support Committee. If you are interested in that, and I am trying to get additional resources for you guys, it's been, it's been a very involved process, but I am very mindful of it. Um, our next LNC meeting is going to be in person the beginning of November in Austin, Texas. We're going to be working with the Travis County Affiliate to have some cool stuff going on. Um, it's going to be a really fun weekend. So if you're in the, uh, if you're within driving distance of Austin, Texas, please come on down. It'll be fantastic. If you have the ability to fly in, do it because it'll be, it'll be great. Um, okay, so that's it for announcements from me. Okay, so let's go back to executive session.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, I would move to go into, um, executive session for the purposes of discussing contracts related to LP merchandising and a legal, ongoing legal issues update.
Okay, so moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay. Any discussion? Any objection? Going once. Go in twice. Hearing none, we are going to go into executive session. So we have handled the rest of this meeting very quickly, which is great. Um, why don't we let everyone stand at ease for about five minutes while Ms. Harlow and I monitor the Zoom and wait for people to drop off? If you are not on the LNC, I would ask you to go ahead and drop off the call so we don't have to feel icky as we kick you all out because that's a bad feeling for us.
And Madam Chair, just for the members' reference, because no motion, other motions were specifically noticed for this special meeting. There'll be no motions coming out of executive session. So you're not going to miss anything. You don't need to monitor when we come back. When we come back, it's going to be to adjourn.
Yeah, it'll be thirty seconds if I drag it out. Digital removal. Okay, I'm going to grab a glass of water and be right back. If anybody needs a short bathroom break or water break, now is the time.
And I'm going to speak to the, just the LNC in general. We're, we're not doing a thing where we're going into a breakout room because this isn't in the middle of a meeting. But I notice that not everyone logged onto Zoom with the email account they gave me that they would be using so that I could automatically shove us all into an executive session room. I, I'm going to name the people that did it right. I'm sorry. And if your name's not on the list, it means you didn't log in with the, with the email you gave me. The ones who did were Mr. Watkins, the Chair, Mr. Elliott, Ms. Eiler, Mr. Nepomucino, Mr. Pankey, Mr. Eklund, Ms. Yenna Scavage, Mr. Ruffo, Mr. Ford and Mr. Bone. If your name's not on that list, you either got to give me a new email that you intend upon using for Zoom, which should be your personal Zoom account. Um, I know some people gave me their LP.org because of what happened earlier with that weird name thing with our vice chair. Don't, we can't be using our LP.org email addresses to log into the Zoom. It allows people to spoof your name. Um, you need to use a private email address that's not publicly known to log into Zoom or you're going to end up being kept in the waiting room because we're going to think you're not really you. So that's the way we're going to solve that problem. Um, so anyone who's not on that list, please get with me because if we were going into executive session in the middle of the meeting and coming back in, this would cause a huge delay. Brian?
Yeah, just a comment on the Zoom situation. Uh, I did use my personal email as you referenced a moment ago, but I also had trouble getting into the meeting just to let you know. And it said something to, it, it said that the meeting was scheduled to start at eight thirty instead of eight o'clock. And then I went to the email to see if it had been pushed back, et cetera, et cetera. So there was a glitch. Uh, just wanted to alert you to that and we can discuss it offline if need me, but I am on the road for this coming now and for the rest of the new week.
And that was a Zoom glitch. Members also reported having issues. Um, and I'm looking at our admin console right now in Zoom and it, the time is correct. So Zoom is having some technical issues tonight because members reported that as well.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure you were aware.
Hey.
Yeah, I'm usually signed in to my Zoom account. And I, and I just, I believe from Andrew. So I currently it said I wasn't signed in. That's why it's sort of designed to email. So I just, I already logged in my email now. But for my account, so hopefully it says I'm.
It, it does.
Okay.
Hey, uh, Pat Ford here, real quick. If I could just reach out to all the regional reps. My goal is to speak to each affiliate chair in the nation before the holidays, before Christmas. Um, obviously, these are your regions and I want to coordinate with that with you. Also do, maybe have a quick conversation so that we can continue to advance affiliate support and some of the plans we've got. And again, as I stressed in the meeting, as these plans evolve and, you know, input, no pride ownership here, input is always welcome. And, uh, I just, I think it's important for affiliate support to get to really know the people who are running the affiliates. Seems simple, but as we all know, we're a party full of strong personalities and feelings about a lot of different things. So I'd love the opportunity in the next week or two to talk to you folks and, uh, I'll try to keep it, as I mentioned to our, our chair, I promise to keep my elevator pitch to under a half hour. How about that?
And I see Mr. Brown is still here. I don't want to throw you out, Mr. Brown.
Oh, um, okay, so Mr. Brown was wondering if we needed his input on Virginia. Are we even gonna, are we going to be talking about Virginia? Because I had less. I didn't really have any.
Well, I didn't know. I'm sorry.
I didn't have, I didn't have updates. I had the same thing that I would have said last time.
Right, I, I had, Angela and I had messaged about this earlier and I, I'm available if you need me for Virginia because I do have information about that.
I would move that Mr. Brown remain for like the first, like we talk about Virginia first for however long and we hear from Mr. Brown, because even though you and I, um, Madam Chair, have been able to speak with Mr. Brown quite frequently, the rest of the LNC hasn't really had that privilege.
Second.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs it, but second.
I'm, I'm fine with it. Any objections to having Mr. Brown in to chat about Virginia? Going once, going twice, none. Okay, let's have Mr. Brown in. Okay, so on that note, why don't we chat a little bit about Virginia? Who wants to kick it off? We've got, yeah, let's have, let's, let's have Andrew Watkins talk about it and also, uh, Richard, Richard Brown. Yep.
The YouTube recording is still going.
Oh, duff. Thank you. Uh, well, we hadn't discussed anything confidential yet and I will shut that off now. Thank you so much. I sometimes do so much.
That's hilarious. That's okay.
Hold on, um.
YouTube must be digitally removed.
We were basically just like, do we want to talk about the thing?
Well, everyone knows we're going to be talking about Virginia. I mean, like, uh, okay, I think it should be stopped. Did you guys get a notification? Because it says stopped on my end, but I didn't get something that flipped up on my screen.
I didn't.
I just see recording. Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to stop the recording.